All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The next item of business is discussion and possible action to receive a presentation from Terry Simonson with Tulsa County regarding the Tulsa County Criminal Justice Authority. Just by way of introduction, Mr. Simonson's joined us on the phone. He is an attorney who's been in practice throughout Oklahoma for 23 years. His service, as far as public service is concerned, goes all the way back to Mayor Jim Inhofe in Oklahoma, or I'm sorry, in Tulsa County, as well as Mayor Richard Crawford. He's served the Tulsa Board of County Commissioners for many years in different capacities. He's served as Chief of Staff and General Counsel for Mayor Dewey Bartlett, and he's worked with the Tulsa County Sheriff's Office as Chief of Staff and Director of Governmental Affairs, and currently serves as Director of Governmental Affairs to the Tulsa County Budget Board. So, Mr. Simonson's been involved in government at many different levels, as well as law, for many years, and has a lot to share regarding the Tulsa County Criminal Justice Authority, and so I thought it'd be beneficial to hear from him, and then also if he's willing to accept some questions from us. Mr. Simonson, I have the budget financial summary that you sent. Would you like for me to distribute that at this time?
Sure. Let me just walk through that, Randy, and kind of explain what that is. That'd be great.
Okay. Go ahead.
I believe this was, not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year, and so let me kind of walk through how this is presented, and then I'll tell you a little bit about how the trust is organized. You'll see at the top, at that particular time, the total jail budget was $37,800,000. The first line shows what the county estimated would be the sales tax that they would receive that is dedicated solely for the operations of the jail. I think it's .25 cent for quarterpenny, I believe is what it is. And that's what they believed in that particular fiscal year would be generating. After the fiscal officer presents that, then a chart of accounts more or less, those 12 items, is then presented to the trustee of the authority in no particular order. In fact, they are asked to put them in a particular order of how they want to spend the $27 million. How will it be allocated? And so what you see on that front page is the proposed priorities of funding that the trustees pick and say, "This is how we want to distribute $27 million for as far as it goes of the $37 million that's going to be needed to run the jail." And you'll see, and that takes pretty consistent year after year, I think, it's pretty much a labor, staff and administrative fees, and towards the bottom is the medical, food, and the utilities. So, once they approve that, and everybody knows going in, okay, you're $10 million short on the sales tax, so how do we make up that $10 million? How do we make up that $10 million? And when you look at the second page, you see that $10 million shortfall primarily in the medical contract, the food service, and the utility. So, that's kind of the deficit, so to speak, that the sales tax won't cover. So, at that point, then the authority says, "What are the sources of revenue are we going to have in the operations of the jail?" And at the bottom of that second page, you see a list of those other revenues, and they're primarily user fees. People that use the county jail for their purposes. City of Tulsa, DOC, ICE, Marshall. And because we have a history of those users, we have a pretty good idea of projecting forward how much revenue we're going to get from them to go towards the operation of the jail and to provide them jail services. And in that particular fiscal year, you see that of the $10.7 million shortfall, about $8.7 million of it, the authority was fairly certain that we're going to get that revenue in on top of the sales tax. So now we're almost 95% there with a balanced budget of revenue matching the budget. And, you know, that left a balance of about $2 million. And when you do call the sales tax up, and you've accounted for, and honestly reflected what you think the user fees are going to be left, that $2 million then shifts it over to the Tulsa County Board of Commissioners and the Budget Board to say, "We need you to pay that part. We need a proportion of the county general fund, a portion of the ad valorem. We need that amount dedicated in order to balance the budget." And then after the authority goes through this document that I've shown you here, and of course, the three county commissioners also sit on the authority, and they check and they maligate the respective sales tax, they look at the budget, they approve the budget, they look at the history of the user fee collection, and when everybody was comfortable, those were really good numbers. And at that point, then, a meeting will be scheduled with the Budget Board to go do the whole thing again and show them how it got down to the need for the county to step up and finish the budget by committing, in that particular year, it was like $2 million, almost $2 million. So, that's what those three pages use, and that kind of formula or format is pretty much how it's gone, at least in the last few years, with the trust authority. Now, of course, when the Budget Board gets in, you know, and everybody always thought, "I thought we were out of jail business. I thought we weren't funding jails anymore." Because Tulsa County used to be probably like Oklahoma County is back in the day, and it was all funded by ad valorem. And everybody believed that was the path to get the sales tax. That more would be out of the business. That money could now go to run the county government. But realizing that, you know, jail costs go up faster than revenues do, they kind of come around to that, but at the same time, they challenge us to say, "Can you find any more money? Can you find any more efficiency or revenues that might mitigate us having to come up with that $2 million?" And that's what you see on the last page. In this particular year, I did that list and said, "Well, I mean, there are maybe some opportunities. I'm not saying they're easy. I'm not saying they're certain, because you're going to be dealing with, you know, maybe legislation, maybe you're going to be dealing with the federal government, there's all other kinds of options out there, but we're mindful of your concern. We're mindful of being totally separate and not dependent at all to the Budget Board for any money, but the reality is, we may be or might be, but I promise you, we will at least try to pursue some of these revenue and efficiency opportunities that we have. We're not quite there yet. The Budget Board still is having to put, you know, some money into the jail because even those new revenue opportunities isn't keeping up with the increase in the medical costs, or the food costs, or the utility costs. Salaries have kind of stayed flat, and so the real budget that the authority goes through, that hasn't changed a great deal over the last few years. But those bottom three or four categories, the ones that are going to be paid for either by revenues or other means, you can't refuse, it's hard to control food, medical, and utility. It's just hard to control. They rise anywhere from 3% to 5% a year, and when you're not getting the money you probably should be getting, like in the Department of Corrections, or you're not getting the city of Tulsa to pay what you think they ought to pay, that deficit gap keeps growing. Even when we try to give control of some of these revenue and efficiency opportunities, you're always chasing, you're always chasing the hole. And it may get smaller, but it never gets close, because you're always chasing. But, to your point, Randy, that's what this document is, and this is every spring when the, when the trust authorities sit down, you know, they require, A, a budget, and B, revenue projections from the fiscal office, and then start the discussions about how to balance the budget, and as much as possible, keep it off the backs of the Tulsa County assets. That gives you some general idea there.
Let me ask you a question about, if I may, this is Randy. The proposed priorities for funding is, how does the jail, I'm sorry, the Criminal Justice Authority, how do they come up with the priorities and the amounts? Is that something that they hammer out in open meeting and look at the prior year and what the invoices are? I mean, can you kind of explain that process of how they develop what the overall budget for the jail should be?
Sure. The trust authority doesn't really have any employees working for the trust authority, other than to say, they have a general counsel. So, they have to rely upon the fiscal officer that we have in Tulsa County. And the fiscal officer, which is part of our county courts office, is the one that gives all the invoices, receives all the revenue, he prepares the budget books and budget documents each spring to the commissioners and the Budget Board. And so, every trust authority meeting, Tom, our fiscal officer, is there. And during every budgeting process for the Criminal Justice Authority, Tom is there. So, Tom provides, to your point, Randy, Tom provides the projected revenue, Tom provides the historical expenditures, and generally, those expenditures fall in these 12 categories. And at the beginning of the budgeting process, it hasn't changed, but when we first started this, Tom would put up these 12 items. But he didn't have numbers next to them. He just said, "These are cost figures. Your guys' job is to put numbers next to these and the priorities you think should be the priority for spending the sales tax." And through meetings, deliberations, and discussions, those numbers, 1 through 12, those were placed there by a vote of the trust authority. So, basically, they're now telling Tom, in the fiscal office, "When the fiscal year starts, and the sales tax revenue starts coming in, this is the order you pay it. And when the money runs out, the money runs out. And whatever's left on that list of 12 items is going to have to be paid from other revenue because we committed, we already committed and budgeted, in that case, the $27 million. We know we're short, but these are what we think are the priorities." Now, having said that, as you might imagine, it might be better now, but year after year, we were always late in paying the medical, food, and utility bills. Almost without exception, we would carry a month, or two, or three would be carried because the revenue from the users or other means either was slow, or it was less than projected. Now, we never had the medical companies do this, and we never had Aramart start serving us food, and the city never cut off the utilities, but we've got a lot of notices. You know, you're 30-day subpoena, you're 60-day subpoena. And the trust authority said, "Okay, that's not our problem. We have allocated and encumbered and directed where the sales tax money goes, and that's all our job is, is the sales tax. Beyond that, the operation of the jail and the county, and you guys entering the contracts with users of the jail, your job is to negotiate, and your job is to collect that money that's owed to the jail in order to balance the budget." And so, the trust authority is kind of out of that, I mean, obviously, it's concerned, but their primary job is to account for, be guardians and custodians of the sales tax, and make sure that sales tax is spent exactly what the voters were calling it was going to be spent on, and that is jail operations. If it's not sent on the sheriff's office for deputies controlling out in the county, it also gets sent in the courthouse for deputies guarding courtrooms. Their job, it may be, is to be very faithful to what they told the voters, and to be able to be assured by Tom and the sheriff that every time that that sales tax is going right into jail, in one of these, in most cases, one of these top nine categories. And that's pretty much the primary purpose of the trustee of the authority. So, like I said, when you're doing it like that, you know, in hindsight, obviously, a quarter of a penny is not enough. A quarter of a penny of permanent sales tax for jail operations might have been fine at some point in time, but if you look at it today, hindsight would say, "I mean, you probably should have done a half a penny. You probably should have done a permanent half a penny." If you say, "You're not funding it for today, you're funding it for tomorrow." And historically, the costs are just going to go up, users don't pay, or they stop using. They just pull out. I mean, if the ICE people, or DOT, or the Marshall said, "We're not going to use you anymore," well, you couldn't stop them. If you didn't have an agreement, or the agreement expired, and they said they're not going to renew, you still have all those expenses, or a good part of them. And so, like, now, are we going to make it up? So, that's kind of, in hindsight, if, look at your jail costs now, and then do a futuristic trajectory of, if five years from right now, is that sales tax today going to be up? And if the answer is, I doubt it. And are we going to have the same users five years from now that we have today paying us what they should pay at that time? You don't know about that either. So, you don't want to be, I wouldn't want to be, in hindsight, it might have been hard to justify a half a penny 20 years ago, it wouldn't be hard today. And it just wasn't planned like that.
Let me ask you kind of a specific question, and then more of an open-ended one. First of all, what, do you know what the average daily population is of the Tulsa County Jail?
About 1,700.
Okay. And then, the more open-ended one, based on what you just said, it sounds like the authority is really looking at the numbers, looking at the budget, you know, making sure that, like you said, this is where we told the taxpayers the money was going to go, so we want to make sure that's where it goes. Talk to us a bit, if you can, about the actual jail operations. Who operates the jail? The authority, my understanding, is not involved in the daily management, but somebody is doing that. At times, under the authority, it has been the sheriff's office. At times, it's been a different entity. So, how is the actual operator of the jail chosen, and how are they managed or supervised, or, you know, how does that process work?
I think, Randy, I think the statute gives the authority three choices of operation. You can contract it out, like to a CJA, or TJC, or whatever. You can actually have all the employees working for the trust authority, and all of them except the sheriff, I guess. Whoever were the jail employees would be working for you. Or you can call back to the Constitution of Oklahoma, or the statutes of Oklahoma that said it's the sheriff. So, you have three choices: contract it out, have people work for you, or have the sheriff do it. In the history of Tulsa, only one time for one period, and I think it might have been two years, maybe it was four years, did the authority contract it out to Corrections, CJA, whatever it was called, TJC, and it was a disaster for all kinds of reasons. I wouldn't hear them, but for all kinds of reasons. So, when that contract expired, they did not renew it, and they give it back to the sheriff. So, right now, the sheriff operates the jail. Now, the trust, it gets blurry sometimes in terms of how far with the inquiry, how far with the authority does the trust authority have with the operations. And I guess the best answer I can give you is that it goes as far as making sure the money for operations is going to operations. For, for instance, and they always have an outside auditor. I think the trust authority, they can enter the contracts for professional services. That's not like having employees. They've had a general counsel pay for out of the sales tax fund. Every year, they hire their outside, only independent auditor that's paid out of the sales tax fund. I think there may have been a time in the past where they hired a monitor or something to that extent, and that person was kind of like a liaison between the authority and the sheriff, kind of an independent sort of eye that was, wasn't an employee of the sheriff's office. They were actually contracting an employee of the trust authority, that they were kind of an independent monitor. But right now, all of the operations, as far as the county's concerned, and the sheriff is concerned, falls to the sheriff. The biggest issue, and what I would, if I was to look back and say to the jail authority, I'd say, "Anytime that you're about to make a decision for things you want to weigh into the operations, you always have to do a thorough evaluation of liability, liability, liability." Anything, the deeper you get into it, the more viewed is the trust authority take the liability. Right now, it's just the county. Okay? We have a pet in this jail, the county is suing. Trustees aren't suing, the authority's not suing. They're not even named as a defendant. But liability and closure is probably one of the main reasons why in the past, the jail authority has said, "You don't want anybody working for us. We don't want the authority to be sued because all of these people will actually report to us." So, that's been, has always been, it's a very clear, bright line between, you know, operations, who's in charge. So, I guess, Randy, the answer is, you can hire a general counsel, and outside auditing firms, maybe even a monitor. It depends on how decent they want to get into the operations, but if this hope of the trust indenture really is to say that your duty and responsibility as a trustee is to make sure that that sales tax money is going towards jail operations, and you're not there to judge or evaluate how it's operating, because you don't know anything about that, okay? And you're not there to be, you know, kind of, the sheriff's shadow. You just got to make sure that the money's on there, and if the jail goes upside down or enters into trouble, then if you elect a sheriff, he's someone that's going to be held accountable by the public or a jury. So, I think that's really important, that, yeah, you need some professional staff around you, but you might have that by professional services agreement, or the district attorney, whatever he is, but it is important to have some independent voices, but you've just got to be careful, in my opinion, because of the liability issue, how far are you going to weigh in as Monday morning quarterback running of the jail? And be really careful about that. Now, having said that, on every jail authority meeting, the sheriff is there, he's a standing item on the agenda, and he always gives a report. And if people have questions, you know, "What happened to this debt in the jail? How are we coming with the ICE contract? Sheriff, can you tell us a little bit about the equipment?" That's fine. That's okay. There's nothing wrong with them being knowledgeable and understanding it. But making decisions about the operation can or could then hold you liable for the consequences of that operation. And the general counsel reminds them that all the time, and reminds the trustee of the authority that all the time. And it's been asked long enough that we really haven't had anybody go outside the chalk line and get too far into the actual operation.
Well, and that speaks to some of the questions that we had as a committee that goes to kind of the scope of the authority's, the authority's duties or obligations, and of course, making sure that, again, law enforcement is allowed to do what law enforcement does, and that there's not a micromanaging of that. Why is, I mean, my understanding is the sheriff in Tulsa County is not a member of the trust authority. Can you speak to why the sheriff's not a member, what maybe the thought process was at the time the trust was developed?
Well, my memory, Randy, to Randy, is, at the time that the trust authority was developed, that particular provision in the trust, in the trust statute wasn't there. There wasn't the option of saying, "It's going to be a county commissioner, a sheriff, and three citizens selected by the county commission." That wasn't an option. And so, because it wasn't an option, the composition of the trust authority really got him off the negotiations at the time of the sales tax election, where the county commissioners, in order to get the mayor of the city of Tulsa, and the mayor of all the cities in Tulsa County, to get their support for a sales tax election, they had to agree that as beneficiaries, those mayors would be on the trust authority. And their argument was, "If our citizens are going to pay it, we want to see it paid." So, they decided, in their trust indenture, okay, it'll be a seven-member, four mayors, three county commissioners, and over, and since that time, believe me, there's been plenty of talk, now that the statute is available, that you guys probably would look at, about the five-member, with the sheriff being on it. That's been resuscitated more and more all the time, and I think we may have mayors now that are okay, or getting more comfortable with the idea of saying, "I don't want to be on this. I want off of it. I don't want to be on it. I'm comfortable with the sheriff being on it, and a commissioner, and three unelected people selected by those commissioners, and go to the five-member model." I don't think when we started this, Randy, we had the five-member model option. And that's how, and that's kind of how we have what we have today. But there have been discussions. Now, we've got a new mayor, and with that mayor, there seems to be a culling of the ICE, to the city and the county, and hopefully, things are working better. And from what I'm understanding, is that if they can get all of the beneficiaries to agree to amend the trust indenture, or whatever is the process to amend it, I think the county commissioners and the sheriff would like to have your model, or the model you're looking at, the five-member aspect of it would like to do.
One of the, the chair has one more question, and then I'll open it up for other members of the committee. As you probably know, Mr. Simonson, we are one of two counties, we might be the only county left in the state that does not have a county sales tax. So, you know, assuming that that's not a direction that we go, do you have any thoughts or recommendations about the funding and how that is done directly from the Oklahoma County Budget Board?
Well, I know, I mean, as I said, in the past, when the jail was a lot cheaper run, I still believe that the sheriff's office, both the deputy side and the jail side, probably was the, had the biggest appetite for the big fight out of the county's general fund. And as you know, as difficult as it can be to raise the dedicated millage that counties can have to operate, there's just a lot of core services of county government that shouldn't be done because the main and first one of the type of, would be even a large share. If we didn't have the sales tax today, I'm sure we'd be there, back to that, along with some of these user fees, assuming we have users that wanted to pay, and we could arrive at an agreement on a rate with them. All we would have been back to the legislature, or we would have gone to the voters again for something. I think you've got to have a dedicated source of funding for the jail, and at least this county, at the time, it would seem more palatable that the citizens would approve the sales tax as opposed to the increase in ad valorem. That actually has held true because in 2014, we went back to the voters for the first time in almost 20 years to ask them for another .25 permanent sales tax to add onto the jail designated as specialty mental health facilities there. And, believe it or not, I think it was a 68% approval rating, where the citizens agreed once again, "I'll raise my sales tax for the jail because I understand the mentally ill challenges of the community and of the jail," and that seems a small way to go. So, so far, sales tax has been faithful, people have been faithful about committing and recommitting their sales tax, because you got the right message, and you got the right messages. And remember, I mean, I told the sheriff in 2014, I said, you know, we had a sale, we had an election county-wide for a sales tax increase to improve the river, the river we have, or the kind of thing that you guys have with yours, and it was finally defeated. And then, five years later, we come, we come over to the same electorate body, the same Tulsa County voters, asking the same amount of sales tax, only this time, we ask them for a jail, and they say yes. And I said, I told sheriff's aides at the time, I said, "So, look at that. These same people that said no to recreation, entertainment, economic development, they said yes to the jail." I think, you know, how do I figure that? How do you make any sense of that? But I think if you have the right message and the right messenger, and you vote with the public for it, don't do the right thing. And if you don't have your act together, they'll tell you that, and you'll have to come back again. So, I think, Randy, in the end, you know, like you have now, it's a blend. You've got sales tax, user fees, and a little ad valorem. You've got to have some kind of formula like that, I think, and don't expect all of any one of those to do all of it. Otherwise, you're going to have a really high sales tax, or you're going to increase your profit tax.
Sure. Let me introduce the other members of the committee, which I probably should have done when you first started, with Steve Satterwhite, who's the chief deputy for District Two, and then Cody Compton, who's the first deputy for- Two, and then Cody Compton, who's the first deputy for District One. So, I'll now open up, uh, if any of the members of the committee have questions for Mr. Simonson.
Mr. Simonson, uh, this is Commissioner Johnson's office. How are you today?
I'm fine. Good to see you.
Yes, sir. I, I did have a question. I, I think the, the first question, of course, that needs to be asked is, "Are you willing to do a trust?" And then I think beyond that, the next major question, and Randy, you had alluded to it a minute ago, is how broad or how narrow the scope is going to be. Um, when you mentioned, uh, you've talked about the jail a lot, in, in your current setup, you guys, uh, the trust authority has nothing to do with the law enforcement aspect, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, item number three in your funding mechanism here, the eleven million dollars deputy slash management, that would be four deputies that are working courthouse security and that are working in the jail, correct?
Well, partially. Let me explain that, because you hit a really good point. I should've touched on this. Um, Hamlet Lans, uh, had this philosophy, that he thought that, that the employees in the jail need not just be, you know, your twenty-six thousand dollar a year detention officer, but there should be more, as he would call it, your gold badges, your actual deputies, your plea, train, certified, forty-six thousand dollars a year deputies. Now, I don't know why he had that philosophy, but he did. And, and so, obviously, over time, that really kind of exploded the jail budget, because he thought he needed really law enforcement officers, not DOs, in, in the jail. Since that time, um, it's been determined by outside evaluators and assessments and just, um, scrutiny, that, you know, we can't afford that policy. We gotta, we gotta start pulling those deputies out of there, put them in a car, get them out of the county, and start replacing them with detention officers, DOs, that can do it. But to your point, yes, what you see, item number three, is whether it's a deputy or, and they'll become there, some supervisors, but, um, item number three, deputy management, and that's gonna be your jail administrator, and that's going to be, we have people over there that do HR, we have people over there that do risk assessment, we have people over there that do policy development, civilians, these are civilian people. Um, they're all part of the jail payroll, they're all part of the jail management, they don't know anything of the law enforcement side. I mean, this jail operation is a standalone thirty-eight million dollar business, and I believe we have three hundred, maybe three hundred and fifty employees in the jail, that honestly don't do cop work. They do detention and jail services. Um, so, you've got a lot of people over there, um, all get county benefits, the help and everything like that. Um, but that's what that point means. And so, when I said deputies, there are some there, but I think we're gradually moving away, well, we see some, but moving more towards the detention, uh, officer. But they're all at the jail. One of the issues that came up to a point you just made is, so the trust authority finds out that we have people on the jail payroll, but they don't seem to work in the jail. And what they do is that they have some responsibility for taking custody of prisoners. They move them, maybe they move them from the jail to the courthouse, maybe they're already in the courthouse, and they're handing it off to them, and they shepherd them to courtrooms, guard them, take them out of the courtrooms, and fasten them to jail. So, the question came, is that a jail function? Not in the jail, never were jail, always in the courthouse, but you do touch prisoners. So, should that be considered a jail function? I, I think, um, for the most part, the trustee, once I understand the job description, and, and that's really important, because some of them are real prisoners, really, "Yeah, I work in the jail, I never leave there, I park my car in the parking lot, I'm there eight hours a day, and then I go home." And then you have other people that say, "Well, I, I'm in jail holding over here, I'm in the courthouse, I'm jail holding. I hold the people the jail brings to me, and when the judge calls the docket, we take them up to the courtroom." Well, that's kind of the extension of the jail, the way our physical plan is laid out, the jail is off two blocks from the courthouse. Um, you gotta transport all day, you gotta hold them all day, and they all wear sheriff uniforms. Um, so, I think, more or less, I think the trustees have come to understand, or at least agree, is that, if not all, if the dominant amount of the time spent by that employee is a jail-related function, even if they are not in the physical jail, and that would be in that line, item number three, too, some of them would.
Okay. Um, and then another question, and this may come across as, as critical, and it's not, it's just, it's really for informational purposes. On item number ten, eleven, and twelve, um, there's, the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth priority as far as funding out of this, why, can you tell me why the, they are down at the bottom of the list instead of towards the top? It seems to me like being a, I mean, those are constitutional obligations, and they're also contractual obligations that could put the county into debt. Would, would we, I mean, is it different with the sales tax? I, I, I'm just curious on if we wouldn't, when we're setting ours up, if we set it up similar to this, if you guys have kind of learned something through your process that would make us wanna put these towards the bottom of the list instead of the top? Does that make sense?
That's a good ques- that's a good question. Let me tell you, one, I don't know if it was this year, or what you're looking at, or another year. So, one year when I submitted that, I changed the order, and I did much like what you're saying, because I thought, "You know what? We're tired of being debt debtors with our medical food utility bill. Um, so we're gonna move those to the top, and we're gonna move the employees kind of towards the bottom, feeling like we'd have to force the hand of the county to say, "Hey, you gotta pay them. You gotta pay these people. They're gonna walk out, okay? They're not gonna give you a, a, you know, like a shut-off notice, like the city of Tulsa's gonna give you. They're gonna walk out if you don't pay them." Well, many more. They said, "That might be true, but we're not gonna let that happen, and as sure as we're sitting here, we can already tell that, um, if we're gonna want money, and somebody's gotta wait to be paid, it's not gonna be the health. It's gonna be these outside private vendors. They're just gonna have to wait to be paid, but we're not gonna make this little single twenty-six-year-old detention officer wait to get paid while we'll be sued under the Oklahoma Labor Law." And so, I, you know, I thought that I could achieve the priority, we could lift that up here addressing, and move our private vendors to the top, move our employees to the bottom, and that didn't fly. And I, and I don't disagree with that. I mean, yeah, these guys work, and they work hard hours, and sometimes they work double shifts if we're short. Well, of course you wanna pay them on time. But if the county says, "We don't have the money to pay them, we can't pay them." Until some of these bills go out, and some of those other money comes in, we can't skip a month. And because that was, that part is so uncertain, because there's not enough sales tax, and you gotta rely upon the uncertainty of billing our users and hope they pay within thirty days or sixty at the most, if any of their payments, uh, that would never work with people. And so that's why it got pushed back to the top.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Simonson, this is, uh, Steve Satterwhite, and I'm from Commissioner Mon's office. How are you?
Good. Pleasure joining you.
Thank you. Um, how does your sheriff use his service fee funds and his special funds?
Well, there have been times when he has, um, wanting to those service fee funds to show a good faith effort to make up this deficit, or if there is a deficit. Uh, so I think this particular example of the paper you've got, almost two million dollars, I can't remember exactly that year, but, I mean, the sheriff, if he has the money, uh, in the service fee account, he's willing to commit some of that money, uh, towards some of those jail expenses. It might be vehicles, it might be training, um, it might be legal expenses, it might be something that otherwise you might not think should call, should call heard to the county and second to a, a service fee fund. I think the sheriff, in trying to work in cooperation and partnership with, you got the county commissioners, you got the budget board, and you got the criminal justice authority, you got three bodies, all looking at this jail, and then you have the sheriff. You got all these bodies, or officials. Um, so he has to use some of these, uh, for that. I think it would be fair to say, though, that most of the money in that fund probably goes to the law enforcement side, uh, and I could certainly pull up that and find out for sure for you, but mostly it goes to the law enforcement side, but if there's the funds, or if there's a need, um, and he wants to come to the table and kind of get some extra money from the budget board and the county, I think in order to do that, he'd expect it, and he's delivered on, putting some on, on the table himself. So, he becomes a stakeholder if the service fee fund, uh, uh, can do that. And from time to time, he's, you know, he's, uh, he's had to do that. It might be a tiny help catch up with the utility bill, or the food bill, or the medical bill. I know in the past, if the sheriff had the money to do that, uh, he has helped with that, and that's where the money came from.
Okay, and then the second part, uh, does Tulsa house prisoners from other municipalities?
We do.
Okay.
And this is something that I, I just discovered, and I told my chairman of my commission this, because I was a little troubled by it. So, last week I asked our jail administrator, "How many people do we have in the jail from other counties?" And I think he said, "Forty-four." And I said, "Do we bill them?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Why don't we bill them?" I mean, we bill everybody else that uses it. He didn't know, because he's the jail administrator. And I told my commissioner, I said, "I don't know if this was just, you know, everybody dropped their back, and, and, you know, I'll help you, he'll help me." And if a county, I guess a county jail, uh, a smaller county jail is full, um, or, or whatever, other, maybe that, the jail was small, and they rested a bunch of people, and it's gang members, and they gotta segregate them or separate them, and they call up and say, "You got some room, uh, can you take them?" And, and we have. Um, now, I don't believe they'd pay long, although in that list, when I asked him how long, it was forty-four. How long is the longest one been there? I think somebody's been there since October or November. And when our current sheriff learned that, he said to the jail administrator, "Get ahold of, I don't know, a dispo fee or a multi or whatever, and tell them, 'Come get these guys.'" And I told my Commissioner Peters, I said, "If we're gonna do that, we need some inter-agency agreement," I think, um, like we do with our juvenile center here, or several counties use our juvenile detention center. And we have an agreement with every one of them that spells out service conditions, payments, and that works out fine. We probably need something like that. If we are gonna be in some sense in regional jails, then we need a agreement, I think, uh, uh, detention agreements with all of these, these counties to say, "You'll have to, uh, to use us." And the, and the biggest problem I saw with that is, as I said to the jail administrator, I said, "How do you know these other counties aren't sending us their high-risk, high-r liability people?" I mean, they could be something you just have as tuberculosis, or heart conditions, or you think of all kinds of psychotropic drugs. It's, you know, maybe we do a little intake, I don't know. I don't know what we do when we get them. Um, but I said, "It's a high risk that you may not know, a blind risk. So, we need to cover our bases there. Now, I'm not saying we don't help them, but, you know, you need to verify what you get." So, the short answer is yes, we do, we do do it, while we probably could do it if that happens.
And I'm assuming that you house inmates from jeans and outline places, right?
Well, here's what we do, and so let me tell you the, say, uh, the single bonus detention we have. There's ten, I think, there's ten cities in Tulsa County. Every one of those ten, but one has her own jail, unit for me, that, that the taxpayers and the citizens in those cities pay for it. The city of Tulsa did not have its own jail. They use us as their jail. So, as a hindrance, let's say our good friend Ray Mon, who was arrested in Dixie for drunk driving.
The, the commissioner is objecting as you speak, so, but it gives, this is a hard-flung hypothetical, so it's fine, I think.
I can see him, um, so, um, he, he, he goes to Dixie municipal court of the Dixie jail, he keeps his business, he never comes to the Tulsa County jail. So, last call was that the police officer did a cold raid over for drunk driving, finds out, not only that we're driving, but he stole that car. Okay, so I have a city charge, and I have a state charge. So, what Dixie does, Dixie takes Ray into the Dixie jail, they disclose him their city's charge, and then, and only then, do they transport Dix, or, uh, Ray over to the county jail. We don't charge Dixie for that. That's what the sales tax pays for. But we transfer him over, and so for the most part, everybody in the Tulsa County jail is there on a state or federal truck, except the city of Tulsa. And that's what the fight is always there. We give everybody ARS for everything. And the disagreement or dispute is, "Well, how come you're not paying for people in here on this city charge?" And it's, "Okay, we'll take that. Okay, good. Now, what about the NIX charge?" That's the bonus detention. In the situation I just made, hypothetical I made of Ray, if Ray was arrested in the city of Tulsa for drunk driving and stole a car, one city charge, one state charge, and then go commit to the county jail, the city's like, "We're not paying anything for that. We're not paying anything for that, um, because it's a state charge." And we argued and argued and argued with them that, "Yeah, but if, if you had a city jail, like we have in Little City, too, you would've taken Ray there first, disposed of your municipal charter, municipal warrant, and then you would've transported him." And you're right, then you wouldn't pay. Because we don't have a jail. So, we are your city jail, and we are the county jail, all in one jail. And that's been a real bonus detention, and it really makes these other city managers, city managers mad, because, you know, they're saying, "You don't charge them for a municipal, you know, prisoner, but we're charging our taxpayers and our town money to fund a municipal jail over here. That's isn't too hard." So, that's the, that is, that is probably one of the main reasons why there's always been such an impasse or tension between Tulsa County and the city of Tulsa, because the city has actually agreed to pay sixty-nine dollars a day, that is the per diem rate, sixty-nine dollars a day. What the marshals pay, is what ICE pays, is what the city of Tulsa pays. So, it's not how much they pay, it's who they're paying for. And that's the case fight, who we're paying for. There's clearly more people coming to that jail by TTD than anybody else, by far. More people are put in that jail. We have thirty-three agencies that use the jail, everything from the fishing game guys, you know, to the city police, to the marshals, to the feds, everybody uses it. Um, but, and the city pays, it's a going rate, but they don't wanna pay, um, the county commissioners, police, and that they should pay. If you use the jail, you should pay, and the charges probably really shouldn't matter, if you have a city charge, you'd be paying to have a city jail, you had one, and you don't have one. Uh, so you should be paying us to feed your city jail. That's really important. I think that's why you'll find, you know, and one of the, what's happening right now, I don't know if you guys have picked up on the Tulsa paper here in the last couple of days, very clearly in the, you know, as you may have seen, in the trust and indenture, um, you know, it, it, it says, um, that, uh, you know, that the, that the beneficiaries shall not have any rights to house any of their prisoners in a detention facility without payment of appropriate cost as determined by the governing body of the county. That'd be what it is. So, it was very clearly in there. Now, it doesn't say you have to have an agreement, it doesn't say you have to negotiate, it doesn't say anything like that. Now, practically speaking, that's the way they always approach it. But the commissioners, on Monday, during their meeting, could, could move, second and pass a resolution that says, "From July first forward, the city of Tulsa shall pay sixty-nine dollars per day, per person they put in the jail, period." They could do that Monday. And, and they, they are in compliance with the trust agreement, and the city would start being zilled to that, and all hell will break loose. Somebody would end up, somebody would put somebody to court, as we just, we know that would happen. But the authority is there, and that's a real important authority to keep with the county commissioners. You know, of the whole trust indenture document, probably about fifteen pages long, I always thought the sales tax, that one sentence at the bottom of page eleven was probably the trigger that would help, that could give it the cause of big fight, that you're misgiving, and nobody wants. But once it's been officially determined that they can set it, and you gotta pay it if you wanna use it, and we can litigate it to the council alone, but we're gonna get that done, and when it's done, it's done. And that is really important. I mean, the wording could be different, you all might have better wording, and lessons learned, kind of wording, but, um, they, they agree to that at the time.
Mr. Simonson, Chair has a question. Um, how many Tulsa, city of Tulsa detainees, you know, average are kept in the Tulsa County jail?
You know, Randy, I have to, I have to look at that, um, you know, practically speaking, I know it sounds like apples and oranges, or maybe a dozen, but we're more a detention facility than a jail. So, you know, you may have a hundred or two hundred people booked in, and a hundred or two hundred people released, every day, that whole town. I think of the seventeen hundred- I think of the seventeen hundred, there may only be fifty people. At one time, somebody, I asked somebody, how many people are serving time? In our jail, that was sent to our jail, and they're serving time in our jail. It was like fifty. All those other people, the federal and the state government has us hold. Almost all of them, I mean, everybody that's caught, for the most part, everybody, there's a few exceptions, they can't get out, they're all pretrial. So, the numbers, I can give you the number, Randy, it's kind of hard for me to know, but by and large, most of the people in that jail are there, the Tulsa police department put them there, and it may be prison charges or state charges, but that's our biggest use.
Right, and that's what we're looking for. We, you know, we understand that state inmates, you might only have about fifty that are serving their time. We're just, we're talking about the detainees pretrial, and out of that seventeen hundred, what I understand you're saying is more than half, a majority, are from the city of Tulsa, whether they're on solely municipal, solely state, solely federal, or a mixture, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Satterwhite, do you have additional questions?
No, but thank you very much, Mr. Simonson.
Okay, Mr. Compton had some more questions.
Just as a follow-up, I'm not a big fan of recreating the wheel, so I really appreciate you being here. You guys have done a lot of important legwork over the years that I hope that we can really benefit from here in Oakland County. You mentioned a few things that you think you would have preferred to be done differently, either at the time of the trust indenture was adopted and throughout the process. I think I heard you say, first, you mentioned a second ago in the beneficiary section, I think it's section eight, paragraph C, the language about being able to board prisoners without charge. I think you had mentioned that that was an important sentence that we might want to take a look at. You had mentioned the tax percentage, maybe that that should have been a different amount in the past, and then also the composition of the trustees, which, you know, legislation has changed since then. Is there anything else? And also, you had mentioned that you guys did go out for a contract for services of the operations for a short period of time, and then moved it back to the sheriff, and that was a lot better, I think is what you had indicated earlier, it was a nightmare when you have a contract. Is there anything else that you guys have seen from the initial drafting of the trust indenture to today that you would, pitfalls, if you will, anything that you think that we might want to do differently, or specifically things that you've done that was just absolutely wonderful and it's kind of saved you guys along the way from heartache and disaster?
Sure. Well, one of the things that we did, and I don't, I don't believe it was in the resolution that the voters approved, I can't remember, or maybe it was a separate action that was taken by the commissioners. But from the very beginning, we had a sales tax overview committee of citizens. I was actually, this was started back when the jail was done, the mini wall was being built, so it was the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands. I was actually the first chairman of that group. I believe the composition is that each trustee got to pick two people to serve on it, citizens, and they elect their own chairman and the officers they want. And they need, every month, and again, it's kind of like the citizens wanting to make sure the sales tax is being spent like it was promised it would be spent. And there's always a standing item on the trust authority agenda for a report from the chairman of the sales tax overview committee. So the citizen chairman shows up and reports anything that they have found. When they have meetings, they might have me come, or have the sheriff come, or the fiscal officer, or anybody come. If they've got questions about things, like the ones you guys are asking. So you've got the citizen part of it, I think that's really important. The other thing I guess I would say that we've learned, words matter. Words matter, and when you use words in a trust indenture like programs or internal management, to be really clear, what does that mean? Where are you taking these trustees? If you say that's part of their scope, what does that mean? Hey? Sometimes, you know, you might have a bloody head, and the sheriff maybe who says, oh, no, that's hijab. And I took these saying, well, I interpret my duty in the scope when it says programs that, you know, we can pay, you know, start doing a detox center, or start a work release, or things like that. Well, I don't know if they can or not. So I think that the more you can say and define and describe that, think of like programs, think of like internal management, the better. The county still owns the jail facility, they just lease it to the trust authority, so we keep it, we still own it, the local, you know, county property, county insures it, that kind of thing. Well, we lease it over to the trust authority. I don't believe there's any contract, I don't believe there's any contract per se that the trust authority enters into with anybody like the food service, or the healthcare company, or the guys that used to run the commissary. That was all the issues. But they did hire us, like I said, a general counsel, I think that's key and critical, to have somebody that can guide you through executive sessions, through liability, through lawsuits, in case the trust authority is named as a party, sometimes happens from time to time. Because of the way the composition is made up of the three county commissioners and the four mayors, it sort of implies there's staggered terms. Only staggered to the extent that as long as you're the mayor or a lawsuit, you're on it. But if you ever roll off as mayor, you're off. And some of these smaller towns, in that, have seven city councils, and one of those councils, I guess they elected the other guy to be the mayor, he didn't campaign to be mayor, can't be a counselor, but between the group, they pick one. And remember that is? You're on the trust authority, as long as you're mayor. If next week we decide we're gonna pick a counselor from District Five to be the mayor, you're off, he's not on the trust authority. Well, I guess that's okay, I mean, it's kind of staggered in a way, while it's, this is insane staggered, but it ends up rotating around. The mayor of the city of Tulsa's on it, and that's a four-year term. So that one is pretty solid. So the commissioner, they're on it, four-year terms, if they keep getting elected. In fact, I have, I'm gonna email to Randy, two things. One is, we get, and it'll answer some of the picket questions you guys were asking. Every month, the sheriff's office does a detention division monthly report. And I got the June twenty-seventeenth report by jail administrator David Parker. And it's all, and it's written in the trust authority, and the chairman of the trust authority is the chairman of the board of county commissioners. So this year, Ron Peters, so he's worked both paths. I'm gonna send you that, and you'll see a lot of the digging down data in detail, it kind of, it shows you about the use, kind of people that are in there, the programs we offer, I think it'll be helpful. And then I did another sheet, which I'll send, goes, sir, to your question, and that is trust issues of the trust. Making sure that it's very clear, so how do we amend this? Who can amend it? Does it take, does it take all of the trustees? Does it take just two persons in the trustees? Does it take all the beneficiary cities that use the jail, even if they aren't the trustees? Do they still use the jail if they're beneficiary? Or is it just the trust owners, like the three county commissioners? To me, that is really important, just to make sure that you've got good legal counsel and advice that says, as time goes on and needs to change or amend this trust indenture, who can do that? As you heard, I just kind of rolled out what I've heard over the years, two, three, or four models, or opinions, that people have on just who can do that. I think if, I mean, I think if someone had said to us, any two of the three commissioners can amend this trust, they probably would have tried to amend it to go the direction you guys might be going, and knock it down to five people and put the sheriff on it. They probably couldn't, would have done that if they thought they could do it. But I don't think the way it's written, or we've been told it's written, that it's not that simple. And these mayors don't want, they're not gonna vote themselves, they haven't in the past, wanting to vote themselves off. So amending the trust is really, really important, and certainly a clear understanding of who operates the jail, that's really important as well. One final thing I'll say about the funding, and I wish we hadn't, this was something that we should have done differently. So, you know, when you pass, when the citizens pass the sales tax, let's say it's a county sales tax, then the board of county commissioners by resolution can have a resolution that imposes the use tax of the same amount that applies to certain use tax applicable things. And our county commissioners did that. But back at the time, nobody knew what a use tax was, the sheriff didn't, nobody really knew what the use tax was, or what it could be used for. And since it wasn't tied to the ballot, or how, and the voters never approved it, the commissioners, the interpretation was at the time that the county commissioners can use it for anything they want, they don't have to use the jail. And so they did. And so, way back then, they passed a resolution that said, any jail use tax collected is all for the fairgrounds, so we can use it as fairgrounds. Family guys didn't know anything about it, nobody knew anything about it, it didn't seem important at the time. And so the fairgrounds have been getting the jail use tax twenty years. And what they did was, they took that revenue and issued revenue bonds, and made the fairgrounds look great, and they're paying it back with the use tax. And meanwhile, our jail is falling down for lack of maintenance. And I knew about this years ago, and started looking into it, and none of the commissioners were here anymore than were here then, and I said, you gotta bring that jail use tax back. If you'd have brought it back, this little budget I handed out to you, you probably wouldn't have to go back to the general fund at all. You would have had the jail use tax. Well, Terry, we can't bring it back now, because we've already committed it to the orgies out of the fairgrounds. I go, when's that gonna do that? Well, they told me when the bonds were gonna be up. So then I dug a little deeper and found out that not only were they collecting a lot of money from the jail use tax, they were collecting more than they needed for the debt service, and they had a surplus in the bank, in an account at Bank of Oklahoma, thirteen million dollars. Sitting in the bank, jail use tax not needed for debt service at the fairgrounds, and not accessible by the jail. I said, okay, you gotta start peeling some of that use tax back to the jail. Even if you just put it as a current maintenance account, for that five-hundred-thousand-dollar air conditioning system, or whatever. Well, because we're getting near the end of the bonds, and actually, I'm getting, one bond ends this year, and one bond, I think, the fairgrounds ended four years, they agreed, and they pulled one-point-two-million dollars out of that excess account at the Bank of Oklahoma and put it towards the jail budget this year. So if you go forward with the sales tax, and the commissioners are likely to do the use tax, think about how you want to use that to help you fund what the jail is gonna be. If you don't need it right away, and you just let it feed you like you did here, that rainy day fund is gonna come in handy someday, I guarantee. And so don't forget the jail use tax. And nobody knew, I knew about it, it's just like a different job in government, I couldn't explain it to anybody over there, they didn't understand what I was saying, and I said, that's because you found the books, it's a fairgrounds, you're not gonna find it in the books on the hall here. And there it was. Very important.
Are there any additional questions from members of the committee?
No, I would just like to thank you for your time, it's been very enlightening and very helpful.
I'm glad I can help you, I'll be anytime you need any more. I've got a pile full of documents and folders, or things here, and just actually, given the chance, the pleasure of talking to you guys today, I pulled them out. I thought what I'd do is I'd just make copies of them, put them in a notebook, and the next time I see Ray or Randy, I'll send it to you. And at least, as you said, one of you said before, there's a lot of stuff, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I think the guys got the opportunity to make a better wheel. And I hope you did.
Great, thank you, Mr. Simonson. I know that you have had several meetings lined up before and after this meeting today, so we really appreciate your time and attention, and look forward to receiving that information. I'll distribute it to the committee, and once again, we just appreciate your time and sharing your insight.
Anytime I can help you guys, I'll be glad to.
All right, thanks, sir. Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Any discussion regarding item four? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, so, motion carries. Item number five, discussion for review possible action regarding the proposed criminal justice system authority trust document. Again, this is going to be a standing item, I put on the agenda just in case we need to further discuss the document as we work on changing, amending, whatever it is we might do. So I don't have any necessary action to take, but I'd be willing to, again, entertain any motions, open it up to discussion at this time. I'm out of quiet.
I mean, I think it's still a little bit premature to get into the weeds on it. I do think some of the stuff that I mentioned last week about, some of the language in here, sounding like it's talking about law enforcement and the juvenile bureau, I think that's definitely something that we need to look at. Removing from there, I think, I had talked about staggered terms last time, he had mentioned that. I think that was, that's an important provision. I think to keep us out of the issue that we've had in the past, I think that might be.
Okay, that's.
I'm frightened. I thought you were gonna answer that phone.
Wow.
Didn't we provide the number?
No, he transferred.
He transferred. Wow, I hope there's not an emergency at the house, and now.
She'll call back.
Randy, go off, if you're watching. No, you know, we've had issues sometimes with PBA when a commissioner can't be there the way that document is set up, that their chief deputy can't sit for them, that may be something that we want to look at here to make sure that the commissioner, if, is not able to attend, that they can still have somebody attend in their stead. But I think a lot of that is stuff that we can iron out down the road. I still think that we need to get the players that are involved here, the sheriff's office, the DA's office, the public defender's office, the courts, I think we need input from various people, as to what they would like to see.
Absolutely, and that's one of the things that, of course, we're gonna start rolling quicker. So I wanted to hear from Mr. Simonson personally, they have twenty years of experience, both the bad uglies that he talks about. I did send him a list of those issues that we had talked about in the last meeting regarding staggered terms, regarding scope and all those things, so I'm glad he touched on some of those things. There was something else that you, oh, it's alternate. Yeah, I absolutely agree, and again, that's just going to be an item that I think will be there every week as we start to develop the document as to what we may want to propose or recommend to the VSCC.
And one other thing, and we're not set up right now with bond counsel at the county, but that is something that we do need. Mr. Simonson mentioned that bottom sentence on page eleven, which was section eight, paragraph C, just that little bit of language, and, you know, the attorneys in here, we know that, you know, a comma makes a huge difference, and some of the, for instance, I think, wasn't it Canadian County that recently had the case where they had a sales tax that was for the operations of the jail, and the Supreme Court ruled that operations was not like DO expense and that kind of stuff, it was more janitorial? And, you know, most of us would think the operations includes all of that, but it was deemed that that was not the case. So I do think bond counsel would be very helpful to review any of the ambiguous, potentially ambiguous language, to make sure that we don't create more problems down the road than what we are attempting to solve.
And we also talked about indemnification language, and then the beneficiaries, as far as if, you know, the other municipalities, that we would house their inmates, or list as beneficiaries in the trust, the Tulsa trust. We don't know if that's something we need to do.
I believe that I previously asked that question of Mr. Simonson. No, I think in the Tulsa trust document- No, actually, I think in the Tulsa trust document, I don't think they're listed as beneficiaries, they're members of trustees.
Okay, and it could be, but yeah.
I think it's that they're trustees.
Right, in our first meeting, you thought that that might give them a little bit more control over the trust.
Give them a lot more control.
Right, and that was what we had discussed.
Right. And again, his recommendation was, use a different model, was what I heard, as opposed to that one, but again, they didn't necessarily have the option of a different model, so.
He was very helpful. I'm glad he joined us today.
Any other discussion regarding item five? Is there any action necessary with item five? Moving on to item number six, new business, is there any new business to come before the committee? Seeing none. Item seven, citizen participation, are there any citizens wishing to address the committee? You may do so at this time. Seeing none. Board comments, District One? District Two?
No, thank you.
All right. I have no comments, it's up to say thank you for joining us. Be scheduling the next meeting for next week, I'll get with Matthew so we can kind of poll on times, because I know we're trying to squeeze this meeting in between all the other ones that we have. If there are no additional comments or business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we adjourn.